Welcome, everyone. It is 5:15 on Monday, November 8th of 2021, and the Carroll City Council meeting shall now commence. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, illumination under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note, everyone, that there's an attendance. And the next item on the agenda is the introduction of the new employee, Chad T. Meyer, for Parks and Recs Director, and Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council and the public. I want to introduce tonight our new Parks and Rec Director for the City of Carroll, Chad T. Meyer. Chad started last Monday, and he comes from Shenandoah, where he's been the Parks and Rec Director there for about six years now. And so just want to welcome Chad to the City of Carroll.
Welcome to your first meeting. Thanks, Chad.
Excited to be here.
Okay, do you have any want to add anything else? That's fine. Nope, good. All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the October 25th meeting, uh, approval of bills and claims. Under licenses and permits, we have the renewal of a Class C liquor license without door service and Sunday sales for Rancho Grande. Uh, we have the state annual financial report for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Uh, the city, uh, street finance report for fiscal year 2020 uh, through 2021. The annual urban renewal report for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Uh, there's also the community development block grant, owner occupied housing rehabilitation grant with the sub-recipient agreement amendment number two. And then we have the change the December 27th council meeting to December 20th for 2021. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I do. I want to go on underneath the, the E, letter E, the city street finance report. And the reason I want to bring that up is, um, for the new council members elected and mayor, some information for you. On the city street finance report, the summary, it shows about $8 million that we have in there, which is quite a bit right now. But I called Laura and talked to her, and she's going to explain how we got to that figure and what's involved with all that. So it'll get you up to speed because when I started council, this was all in place too, just like it is for you guys. She'll help us out here, get, tell you guys how that got to that point.
So on page eight of that report, I think it was page eight, of the report itself, yeah, it does show a balance of 8 million. And this is the summary. This is a balance of the funds that have been identified to be street-related funds as of June 30th of 2021. Of that, um, about 2.3 million is in what we call our road use tax fund. And then another 5.6 million is the balance in the capital projects funds. Well, the capital projects funds is actually made up of three different project funds. We have what we, where we account for our CP streets, which is a lot of, um, what we have been using it for is the overlay projects, uh, street reconstruction. That's the fund that we've been using for that to account for the revenue and the expenses. The corridor commerce, so our street scape projects are accounted for in that fund. And finally, the street maintenance building. Um, of that 5.6, 3.6 of it is for the street maintenance building. One point, just under 1.2 million is for the streets and the street overlay projects. And 848,000 is what's still there for the corridor of commerce or our street scape phases of projects. Now, this is the balance as of June. So we've entered into some contracts, construction contracts, that we've set aside the money in these funds, but had maybe expended all of it at the end of June. So why, that's part of the reason why there's an $8 million balance. So there's still money being expended for the contracts that have been entered into during the last fiscal year. Then as of, I did run a report as of October 31st, so just a few days ago. Um, if we would have done this project, or excuse me, if we would have done this report as of October 31st, the balances that would be in just over 8 million would have been about 5.7 million. Because we've expended some of those funds for the CP, for the capital projects after the June 30th date.
So how long has this money been being accumulated for?
Um.
On the street maintenance?
For, for a number of years. Um, some of this discussion and the discussion and the preliminary design started back in fiscal year, or excuse me, in 2016. So that's when some of that discussion had started, and we started, and then we started setting aside monies shortly thereafter.
Any other questions?
I'll just add, I've always enjoyed this report just for the quick snapshot of our capital equipment in the streets department. You know, it's just to look at trucks, mowers, you know, other vehicles of that sort. Kind of interesting to see it there.
So when would the rest of that street maintenance facility be allocated out?
Uh, just as construction progresses. So I, I'm not 100% sure, Randy, maybe you can, um, address, when is the project planned to be completed roughly?
It's after the 1st of the year.
Okay. I guess that's all I would have on that. Now, this actual project started before you were even here. Is that accurate?
Well, if you're referencing, I do recall that there's then a study that started back in 2011, excuse me, 2001, where a company looked at all the city facilities, not just the street maintenance, but all the facilities and had identified deficiencies or an order of what could and should be done over time.
And it was recommended at that time, actually?
Yeah.
A long time ago.
Long time ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and I believe rather than thick binder, that is still available for viewing here at City Hall, correct?
Yes.
I believe, Jerry, I remember, um, having it in, um, ongoing in, uh, in the CIP, the five-year CIP, from the time I came on the council in '06. Shortly thereafter, so, yeah, and getting a tour, pardon me?
It was a, I didn't mean to interrupt. It was like one of the first things that was brought to my attention.
Right, right, correct.
That year in Boston.
Correct, so it's, it's been in the, and correct me if I'm wrong. I, we had a tour to look at the facilities, saw renderings early on, and, uh, basically, yeah, it's been in the works in the CIP for quite a while.
It will be nice to have it off of there.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Base? Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is oral requests and communications from the audience. Uh, if there's anybody online, I just think I see, I saw anybody there. Um, anybody in the audience with, uh, regards to anything on the agenda, not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to ordinances. And the first, uh, item under ordinances this evening is the consideration of an ordinance designated certain areas of the City of Carroll, Iowa as an urban revitalization area. Second reading, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the council's been considering expanding the Carroll Urban Revitalization Area citywide in order to provide tax abatement to all residential properties in the city. Uh, included in the packet was a copy of the full plan. And at the July 26th meeting, council approved a resolution determining a necessity in fixing a date for a public hearing on the matter of the adoption of the plan. The council held a public hearing on the proposed plan on September 13th, and at that time, no written or oral comments were made on the proposed plan at the hearing. The council closed the public hearing and approved a resolution adopting the proposed plan after September 13th meeting. As required by statute, there's a period of time where a petition could be filed, and no petition requesting a second public hearing was received by the city clerk within the required 30-day deadline after the September 13th meeting. Therefore, the council can now consider adoption of the ordinance designating certain areas as an urban revitalization area. It was included as attachment J in the plan. The council now did raise the first public hearing at the October 25th, uh, meeting. So the proposed plan as drafted would expire on July 1st of 2031, unless it's terminated earlier or extended by a future council. The proposed plan, uh, as drafted does provide a tax exemption to residential and multi-residential properties on the first $75,000 of new assessed value for a period of five years. And that would be a 100% exemption on that new $75,000 of value. So unless there's questions, the recommendation is the Mayor and City Council should consider adoption of the ordinance designating certain areas of the City of Carroll, Iowa as an urban revitalization area plan, final adoption of the proposed, um, or excuse me, just of the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening.
I hadn't heard anything more. I've been at this one for a while, too. There's no other questions. I'll look for a motion to, uh, consider, approve the second reading of an ordinance designating certain areas of the City of Carroll, Iowa as an urban revitalization area with final adoption, uh, of a proposed Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan, uh, attachment J in the plan.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base? Yes. Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Bring the final one.
Or next week. Next week.
Okay. Uh, with that, uh, we're finished with resolutions. Uh, we'll head into, or ordinances, we'll go to the resolutions. And the first item is the BioKinometrics Holdings LLC. And Mike, I believe you've got a.
Yeah. Mayor and Council, so there are a few items that need to be clarified regarding this request. So at this time, staff is requesting a council table action on the FY 2023 Annual Tax Increment Financing Appropriations for BioKinometrics Holding LLC and DMBA Properties Consulting, Inc. Be happy to answer any questions the council has.
I just had a question about the nine new jobs. I, wasn't that the same as last year?
It is. He certified the same number.
Okay.
This year as he did last year.
Okay. I know we were looking for 10. Okay. Right. Okay. And then, uh, hopefully bring that one back and the next one.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, you need a motion to table that one?
Probably should take one.
Uh, I'll need a motion to table the, uh, BioKinometrics Holdings LLC and DMBA Properties and Consulting, Inc.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Seaman? Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the second resolution is the sixth amended and restated downtown urban renewal internal loan. And Laura, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the past several years, council has passed separate resolutions to create an inter-fund loan that would transfer money from the water utility fund to the capital projects fund for the corridor commerce to, we have been using the funding to, uh, complete street scape projects. The low, then the loans were being repaid from the tax increment finding, financing, or the TIF collections that are collected, that have been collected out of downtown urban renewal area. This year, for this next fiscal year, staff has recommended that we use sewer utility revenues to create this loan with the corridor commerce and the downtown urban renewal district. And what's being presented here is for the repayment of a loan to be completed by fiscal '24. Um, it is anticipated that at least an additional $1 million would be needed for the next phase of the street scape Phase 11 project. Um, attached to the memo is the resolution that would authorize that loan from the sewer utility to the corridor commerce and capital projects fund in the amount of $11 million. It is advised by a bonding attorney to document this entitlement for the repayment of this internal loan when you're wanting to utilize TIF. Because in order to continue to collect the TIF in the urban renewal area, we need to certify this debt by December 1st to the county auditor's office. So I would recommend the approval of the resolution that authorizes that internal loan.
And just to clarify, I think you said $11 million. This is the one.
Oh, sorry.
Shouldn't say it.
Sorry, yes, $1 million. Thank you.
Can you guys refresh my memory? What's Phase 11?
Uh, Randy, can you help refresh the memory on what is Phase 11 of the street scape project?
Phase 11 is US 30 from Highway 71 to, uh, West Street and from Clark Street to, to Grant Row. So the two outer sections.
That is pretty much the last one.
That's the last one in the original, uh, street scape program.
It's mostly the lighting.
Yeah, uh, lighting sidewalks, you know, things like that.
And it's a different style lighting, too. It's not the kind of what I call traditional. It's, it's the Cobra Head lighting, um, that you see more in our residential neighborhoods. But it's, it's an aesthetic black versus like a metallic color.
Okay.
Any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to authorize the internal loan to the corridor of commerce capital project fund from the sewer utility fund and pledging tax increment revenues from the downtown urban renewal area for the repayment of the loan.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base? Yes. Dirk?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next item under resolutions is the, uh, approving of an engagement letter with Allers & Cooney, PC, for the seventh amended and restated urban renewal plan for the central business district project area. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this engagement letter is for services related to the seventh amended and restated urban renewal plan for the central business district area. Uh, this work, uh, is, uh, was requested, and we did receive the letter from Allers & Cooney. In general, they will provide the following services. They'll review the amendment prepared by the city for compliance with Iowa Code 403. They'll prepare letters, instructions, notices, meetings, and partial agendas for the city council proceedings related to the amendment. And they'll prepare proceedings related to the adoption of the amendment. Uh, this is a pretty standard, uh, engagement letter. Staff is recommending that the Mayor and City Council consider approval of the attached, or the included resolution approving the engagement letter with Allers & Cooney, PC. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have on this action.
Any questions for Mike? I thought the letter was pretty self-explanatory, so. Uh, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve the attached, uh, resolution to approve the engagement letter with Allers & Cooney, PC, for the seventh amended and restated urban renewal plan for the central business district project area.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, if there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Pat?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. The next item under resolutions is the seventh amended and restated urban renewal plan for the central business district area in the City of Carroll. And Mike, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is the proposed seventh amended and restated urban renewal plan for the central business, uh, project area. There's, that makes a number of additions to the number of projects. There's five new project areas. And Laura, would you go to the next slide? Uh, this map shows, uh, all of the project areas that are included, uh, in this plan. The original, uh, eight with the new additional five areas of 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Um, and they're, they're shown on here. If you go to the next slide, please. Uh, this slide shows the, the five areas in particular. Um, and the first area is a small little yellow area. Um, this was an area that was previously admitted from the original urban renewal areas. Uh, it really came down to the way the descriptions were and over time, because of the rail corridor, the Great Western Railroad, and being abandoned, um, in, in, in the 90s with some different amendments. It just, it was left out. And as we were working through this, we discovered that. So we're adding that as the ninth area. Uh, the 10th area is adding a blighted area, and it's the green parcel. Um, it's a, it's, uh, property at 220 West 7th Street. Uh, that is a blighted property, also locally known maybe as the Villa. Um, that property owner is doing some renovations, is inquired about, uh, receiving some assistance in that redevelopment of that property. Uh, that's what sparked this, um, change tonight. Uh, so, uh, that is, um, being added is the 10th area. Uh, the 11th area is the adding North Adams Street, essentially from 7th Street to 100 feet north of 13th Street. And that's the red area there. Uh, the 12th area is adding the remaining portions of Highway 30 and part of Highway 71 on the west and east parts. So it's the bluish areas. Uh, the, the current, um, the rest of Highway 30 is within an urban revitalization. Now, on the west end, I would note, we don't extend it any further to the west due to the Westfield Urban Renewal Area that encompasses, uh, the Western Iowa Network and originally set up for Walmart out there. Uh, we cannot put an area into two urban renewal areas. Uh, so we excluded that area, uh, from this plan. Uh, the 13th plan, uh, plan area is adding the Union Pacific Railroad and adjacent current and possible future right-of-way, uh, to the plan area. Um, so it could also be included. Uh, so the, the purpose of adding all these different areas does, uh, move to potential projects that we added to the plan, or at least proposing to add to the plan. And it should be noted that there, there's always a litany of possible projects that are in the urban renewal, uh, plan itself. Uh, some of those don't go anywhere. It just provides ability for the council now and in the future to fund projects out of the TIF, tax increment financing or TIF, uh, once it's in the urban renewal plan. Uh, so this includes the ability to fund the Adams Street Reconstruction Project, uh, the ability for the city to provide a grant related to, uh, projects that would apply and receive a downtown housing grant through the Iowa Economic Development Authority to alleviate blighted properties in the downtown area. Uh, the ability for the council to provide grants for facade and other exterior building renovations, um, ability to provide grants for interior building renovations for blighted properties constructed prior to 1940, the ability to fund a quiet zone on the Union Pacific Railroad between Burgess Avenue and Melvin Vista Drive, and the ability to fund improvements as identified in Corridor of Commerce 2.0 master plan. Now, again, I will stress, this doesn't require councils to fund these projects. It just provides flexibility and ability to fund these projects using tax increment financing. Um, let's go to, actually, I should have went to the next map. Um, this is a zoom up, uh, close-up of the kind of the downtown area and the original areas. Um, they were included, this map was included in the plan. And then you can actually see in the fourth map here. Um, those are kind of the particular areas of the, the, the yellow one being the ninth area and the green one being the 10th area. That's also being added to the plan. Uh, so it shows it more in a focused area there.
Who owns the, the yellow area now? Is that part of Union Pacific already?
No, um, and so that is a portion of current East 4th Street or West 4th Street, excuse me. Um, and that is area, it, it's all city right-of-way.
That's city right-of-way.
Yeah. Um, and again, it was just an area of the way those original legos, go back a map. Um, if you look at the original project area from 1967, that's in red. Um, that kind of southwest, uh, boundary followed what is the former, uh, great Chicago Great Western Rail Corridor, which went north of the principal building. Um, if you're familiar with that, went through the parking lot. Well, in the 90s, when some of these maps were redrawn, uh, that original area was actually drawn to actually extend all the way down to the railroad corridor of Union Pacific, which really was an error. So as we were putting these maps together, um, because we expanded further west, we had to change our mapping approach. And so as we were going through and mapping each one of these original districts is when we really found that error of the ninth amended area. Um, we actually pulled the original mapping from the 1967 area. So we know that that's accurate, um, along with the second amended area. Uh, so this is just really correcting that issue. Um, and that's, and to, to that point, too, um, all of these amended areas really include just city right-of-way, with the exception of the 10th amended area does include, uh, the Villa, and the 13th amended area does include two properties that potentially could, uh, be expanded, uh, city right-of-way, uh, with the quiet zone. Doesn't mean that will happen, but they're included um, in the overall urban renewal area boundaries. Okay. Um, so tonight, uh, I would note that season working with Nathan Overberg, uh, attorney with Allers & Cooney to, to update this plan. Um, and, and he did prepare the resolution that are included tonight. These resolutions do a number of things. They set the consultation meeting with the affected tax entities for November 15th. Uh, they designate the city manager as a representative for the city of, during these consultation meetings. Uh, they direct notice to be mailed to the affected taxing entities, including Carroll County and Carroll Community School District. They set a public hearing on this matter for December 13th, and the direct notice of the public hearing to be published. And to provide a copy of the proposed plan will be on file for inspection in the city clerk's office. Um, the consultation meeting will be scheduled for November 15th, 2021 at 10:00 AM. Um, and again, the, the public hearing on the plan will be December 13th of 2021. Um, I would note tonight, and there was a, a memo included, we did work with the Carroll County Auditor's Office and, uh, this afternoon, and they're, after they reviewed it, Otter's Office this afternoon, and after they reviewed it, they did find two real minor issues with the ninth, the description for the ninth project area. So that was laid out. So I would request tonight that if the council does decide to approve the resolutions, that they approve it subject to the amended descriptions for the ninth amended project area. Be happy to answer any questions the council would have. Our recommendation is for approval of the resolutions setting the consultation meeting and public hearing dates. Thank you.
Laura, can you back us up one one map?
That one?
And Mike, the ground here is all right-of-way?
Yes and no. It generally is all, on the western end, there are two properties.
That's why I want to make sure it's not the right one there.
So there is Randy's D-Sly, I believe, and then part of Morehouse Ready Misses within the city limits. That parcel does extend into the county also, so it's actually in both jurisdictions. We included only the section that's within the city, which is permissible under law. Now, I would note, our intentions is not to do a diversion of property taxes. Normally, you'd see that with taxing and financing areas, but that's not our intention at this point unless we hear differently from the council.
There was, there's a little spot that's notched out. That's because that's county property, correct?
That property?
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, because that's in Carroll County.
That's true.
And again, yes, while we're including those two properties, like I said earlier, this does not commit the council to proceed with the project. It just gives the flexibility in the future to proceed with the project.
Funding, funding source for the project, or?
Funding source, exactly.
And Mike, though you've identified specific projects, a lot of the verbiage in here appears to be broad enough that if needs arise that we can anticipate in the future that that is built into this document also.
Correct. And additionally, if there is a project in the future that isn't specifically identified, that may require us to amend the urban renewal district. But again, then, this is a similar process in the future.
You mentioned that, yeah. Thank you. Good. This is exciting. I think visioning and thinking long-term about where we want to go, it's just building on what people have done in the past, and I think I'm glad we're addressing this right now. I applaud you and the staff.
They've done a fast growth.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Over this whole year, really, did a lot of work on this.
Yes, a lot. Oh, just one quick anecdotal thing. A while back, I was looking up some information on Mayor Farner, and the very first original project area in sixty-seven was on his watch. And I found in an obituary of his that they were summing up his accomplishments, and the cost for the original project in sixty-seven was seven million. So I went to the inflation calculator on the internet to to look at what it would cost today if we were doing this project in twenty-one dollars. It would be a little over fifty-five million dollars. I think that took guts back then to to have the vision and leadership to do something that must have seemed quite extraordinary at that time, dollars-wise. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
Laura, are there any other questions for Mike? Or Laura, I guess? Nothing. If not, I will need a motion to approve the resolution setting the dates of a consultation and public hearing on the proposed Seventh Amended and Restated Urban Renewal Plan for the amended and restated Central Business District Urban Renewal Plan with revised description for the ninth amended project area.
So move.
There is a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Flusher?
Yes.
Phase?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. The last item under resolutions is the Grand Park Amphitheater Study twenty twenty-one. And Chad, please.
Yeah, so basically, this is just going to take a look, professional service agreement with Shive Hattery, provided the City of Carroll, per our request, will provide an assessment of the existing amphitheater located in Grand Park. The assessment will be the first step to determine the scope and estimate the potential cost for repairs and restoration. Recommendation came after the Parks and Rec Cultural Advisory Board voted to recommend that the city council approve the professional service agreement at their November one board meeting.
Hey, those pictures were pretty graphic about what's going on with that now. I didn't realize there was so much falling apart.
Does anybody recall, I asked the question last week or so, about three, four years ago, I think it was, we did some work, too, or I think we did some electrical work and whatnot. You guys remember?
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna, I thought that was what, I was gonna bring that up.
Put in a new floor from the electric, then you painted the inside of it. Painting needs to be redone.
System put in.
What's that?
When you say like, wasn't there a B.A. system? What is that?
Yeah, there's two speakers that were out in the.
And that's from that?
Yeah. Oh, they tore out the whole bottom, and Andy rewired, put a new panel, rewired outlets underneath the little ledge right there. It's four outlets. Then we did the lighting out there of the speakers, lighting and speakers out there. So there's a whole new panel on the north side of the bat show. It needs to be repainted. That's definitely one of the first things when we're having water problems. You see where those bricks had fallen out?
When was this constructed?
Thank you, Forty-Nine.
Yeah, I don't know if everyone saw it or not, but Carolyn sent a very nice bit of history on that, too. That was pretty neat. Thank you, Carolyn.
Well, Vicky Gatch sent it to me when I sent her this information. I sent you like a minute part of what she had in the whole.
Is this a possible historical type of monument that would be eligible for something along that line, too?
I don't know. We, I think we'd have to look at like an area.
Okay.
Yeah.
If Paul Simon has a foundation, you might want to reach out. You sent me that article.
Yeah, I know. Paul Simon.
He told me afterwards when I interviewed him that had some of the best acoustics of any place that he'd ever played.
I didn't send that to everyone, but I thought that was amazing, Doug. Yeah, here it is.
Did the paper cover that concert?
So Chris Dodd was running for president, and they're they're close friends.
Yeah.
And so he he played three songs there. The part, it was on a Saturday morning, and it was pretty packed, and so, yeah, he played.
Played there.
I covered it.
Yes, you do.
Interviewed interviewed him on his, on an R.V. on between Carolyn and Dennis.
Are there any other questions for Chad? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Shive Hattery for the amphitheater study in the amount not to exceed four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So move.
There is a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go and vote, please.
Yes.
Flusher?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. With that, we will move to reports, and the first report this evening is the Water Distribution Main Replacements twenty twenty Certificate of Substantial Completion. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. King Construction has substantially completed the Water Distribution Main Project of twenty twenty. Their date of substantial completion was December twenty eighth of twenty twenty, and that compares to their contract, the completion date of March nineteenth of twenty twenty-one. The final contract cost is is actually being finalized now, but it is currently estimated at eight hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and eight cents. And that actually compares to a contract value at eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. So the project was completed early, under budget. So King's did a nice job on it. Our recommendation is your consideration of acceptance of the certificate of completion for the water main project.
Randy, just to refresh my memory, this had some work to do underneath the water tower as well, too, trying to improve pressures and such. Was that part of this?
This was not. That was the previous one.
Okay.
The year before, two thousand nineteen.
Was this down at South Side Park? Some of the work there with the well, it was done there? Or was this, where did this actually hit the ground?
This was located at five different locations along streets. Crawford Street, North of Third, West Street, North of Third, along the U.P. Railroad from Crawford to Carroll, and Clark Street, or excuse me, Court Street, south of Bluff, Bluff and south from there, and then East Street from Second to Third.
I remember seeing and working out, this was where we had some inline boring that they got into, right?
This is the project, the contractor, King Construction, proposed boring that was originally planned and bid for open cut. So they they did do a lot of horizontal drilling.
Lot less disturbance, lot of benefit to this from what I heard.
And that's kind of the first time we had done that, too, right? And was successful with it?
On this scale, yes, it is, and it was successful. You bet.
Excellent.
Are there any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll need a motion to accept the certificate of substantial completion for the Water Distribution Main Replacements for the twenty twenty project.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go and vote, please.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Flusher?
Yes.
Phase?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item under reports is a West Central Iowa Rural Water Association request to provide water service within the two-mile limit. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. West Central Iowa Rural Water has made a request to provide water within the two-mile limits to twenty-one, five, twenty-two Mahogany Avenue. That's physically located south on Grant Road, on the east side of the road, just south of where the trail, the soft trail, turns easterly to go into Swan Lake. So it was the recently subdivided area within the county. Your options are provided in the memorandum. They're actually options provided to you through the Code of Iowa. Unless there are any questions, we'd recommend waiver of your right to provide the water service, and in that instance, West Central will probably provide service.
Do you want to have any city expansion heading that direction anytime soon, probably?
I don't know if there's any proposed at this time. Never know, but.
I didn't know if you guys knew, I didn't know.
No, no.
Is this the closest one that would be closest to the city limits?
Yes. It would be very close. Actually, the city limits are along the south side of Harlan. So it's practically across the road from it.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll look for a motion to waive the right to provide water service to West Central Iowa Water Association within the two-mile limit.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Flusher?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Phase?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The final item under reports is the bid opening for the youth sports complex scoreboards. And Chad and Jack, please.
Yeah. Thank you. On November second, four bids for the youth sports complex scoreboards received at the time of bid opening. Attached is a bid opening report. The lowest responsive bid was from Nevco Sports for a total cost of ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-nine cents. These scoreboards will be very similar to the ones at the adult sports complex. One board is larger than the other, too, because one field is larger, and there is a need for larger display. As mentioned, at a previous city council meeting, the city will purchase the scoreboards, and Seaboard Foods will be reimbursing the city for the cost of them. Additionally, the scoreboard will carry the Seaboard Food logo on each of the three scoreboards. The recommendations for the mayor and city council, in consideration of approval of the lowest responsive bid for or from Nevco Sports for the total purchase price.
Are there any questions for Chad or Jack?
Chad, have you seen the logo? Their logo?
I have not.
Anybody?
I have.
Did you see it, Jack?
Yeah.
And it was previously brought.
I think we showed it to the council. It just says Seaboard, their cursive writing. It's in a blue with a little green logo.
Okay.
That's it. There's no other.
I don't know if it's going to be all that big, is it?
Uh, one by eight, no, one by ten.
Yeah.
You have two different size boards, three by eight and four by ten.
Were there photos provided of these? I didn't see any, but did they give us any?
Yes.
We had them the last time.
I.
We had them the last time, didn't we?
Yeah.
I think I showed everyone what what the board and Seaboard. I don't know if Laura can look up at a little council meeting and pull it up, but.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. No, there was, we showed, I showed Seaboard on the bottom, and then the logo. I think it's like a blue sign with a white edging and yellow numbers. The small field have fourteen-inch letters. The large field has eighteen-inch digits, I should say.
Is there electrical work anticipated to be done to this, or?
Possibly, yeah. There'll be some rewiring. Maybe they are wireless, but still, there's some wiring that needs to be done.
And this is replacement of two existing, correct?
Three, three resisting. And then we've replaced one other time, so it'll be up to the parks to go look at the posts to see if they need to be replaced. You know, it'll be the third time you've drilled into them, and they've been up at least seventeen years.
So three of them should have electricity going to them.
Yeah, they currently do.
Yes.
Any other questions for Chad or Jack? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the lowest responsive bid from Nevco Sports for the total purchase price of ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-nine cents for the youth sports complex scoreboards.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go and vote, please.
Cots?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Phase?
Yes.
Flusher?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Question is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Thanks, Chad.
Yeah, I do, I'm like.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor, right. Sorry, you guys are just too quick tonight. So this is.
Very similar, yeah.
Yeah.
Same logo.
I don't know.
Okay, well.
We got her.
It's a flashing sign. That works. This evening, are there any comments from council? Any comments from the city manager?
Not the city, Mayor.
If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
There is a motion and a second. We'll go and vote, please.
Dirk?
Yes.
Cots?